Invitation. You really can count on these people. Please rise for the invocation. Good Lord, help us to bring your kingdom of love and understanding and peace to the people, all the people, especially Benita Springs. Thank you, amen. We pledge allegiance, we're gonna go one, two, and then three. One, two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we get roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon? Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Yeah.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Okay. The mayor's welcome, we are one of many, one made of many. And we, this government is you and me, and we, we the people. We must keep an eye on us, keep an eye on us, keep an eye on our government, keep an eye on our lifestyles, and this is the place where you can come and express your opinion. So thank you for coming. Okay, proclamations and presentations, would Laura Taylor please go forward?
Public comment.
Public comments, mayor, public comments.
Yeah, I'm sorry, public comment?
Yes, sir. For the record, Jim Magnus, 8841 West Terry Street, wanted to comment on item 10A, the cell phone towers. I do think that it's time and for council to take a look at the regulations. I personally have cellphone calls that drop on a regular basis, and I think it's something that will be a negative for Benita Springs if you have constantly phone calls dropping. I do think that the green sheet is suggesting that staff take a look at it, and I agree with that. I just wanted to put that comment through. Hello, council, mayor, and staff. Have a great day.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Ben?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, Ben Hershenson. I can only speak to add what Jim just said. The service that I have, and I'm tired of dropped phone calls, it happens a lot. In fact, I still have an old fashioned landline, and the only reason I have that is because I need, in case of an emergency, I have to depend upon a line that I know is going to work. And technology is increasing by leaps and bounds, so whatever needs to be done, and I don't have all the specific details, but whatever needs to be done relative to the city ordinances regarding cell phone towers and so forth, please do whatever you can, because this is not gonna lessen the need for cell towers, it's going to increase the need, because technology is expanding all over the place. And we don't have a lot of high buildings in Benita Springs, and I'm the kind of guy who says, I am definitely not a NIMBY guy. If you could put one in my neighborhood, boy, I'd be so excited to support such a thing. So again, please, it's time to redo these ordinances, let's get them straightened away so this city can be part of the 21st century and even beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any more? Here we go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tim Deaton, and I sit on the Technology Advisory Board, and I have since about 2008. We took a look at the cell tower issue, and it appears to us that one of the obstacles in terms of getting additional cell towers and better coverage, and by the way, 86% of the 911 calls come in over cell phones in this area, is to revamp those regulations. Jim Kaufman, our chairman, spoke with one of the major suppliers in the last week, and was told how large their budgets are, and they are huge. But those budgets are only gonna be spent effectively and efficiently in places where they can get cell tower installations ahead of their competitors with little or no hassle. And jurisdictions that have unburdensome regulations are the ones that are going to benefit from that. The Technology Advisory Board suggests that the city council look very carefully at the following. This is Volume Two of the City Code, Part Three, Chapter Four, Article Six, Division One, Section Four, that's cell towers. Now, if that level bureaucracy doesn't frighten you right there, it should, and it gives you an indication of the type of duplicity and problems that might be associated with it. Section Four itself consists of more than 20 pages of fine print through which a potential supplier must wait and weigh those with the FCC regulations that are overriding. There are some the city has some control over, but the majority of them are through the FCC. And I also, in reading that, found the language of Section Four, 1225, both startling, and I found it offensive. It effectively removes the power of the city council to make a decision and places it in the hands of unelected bureaucrats. Here's what it says. "Special exception criteria for broadcast antenna supporting structures," cell towers. "In order to grant a special exception for a wireless communication facility, the city council must make at least one of the following findings of fact," and those findings of fact were listed by the bureaucrats. "Must" is mandatory language in a Florida statute or regulation, so it has taken control from you. "We believe that a better alternative for everybody involved is to author a very simple and straightforward regulation that does four things. One, it relies upon the definitions and language of the FCC without duplication and repetition, because those are overriding. It reduces the requirements to the bare minimum. It streamlines the application and the appeals process, and it returns the final decision of any authority with the city council where it belongs. The Technology Advisory Board urges the city council to move quickly on this, and we offer our assistance if needed." Thank you.
Tim, what was number three?
Excuse me?
Streamline the application and the appeals process.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Are you finished?
Anything else? Sure. I'll answer questions if people have questions, I'll do my best.
It's not a question and answer period.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Public comment? Okay, Laura Taylor, meet you out front here.
How did she last for three minutes?
All right, here's, I remember her when she was a kid, all right? How old were you when you started here?
Twenty-seven, I think, twenty-two.
Whatever, I don't wanna put an age on you. But she's got 15 years of wonderful work, dedication on weekends, and Sundays, and Saturdays, and nights, and whenever, whenever it was necessary to get the job done, and I appreciate that. And here she is, 15 years already, and we're gonna raise her budget, in my opinion, for next year. Where's Arlene? Arlene, you wanna say a few words? She's done a wonderful job for us.
Thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Laura Taylor. I have had the opportunity to work beside her since I did start with the city, which we were both 12 when we started, just if you're doing that.
Exactly, I was thinking, absolutely.
But I have had the opportunity to work with Laura under extreme duress, Hurricane Irma together, watching a rooftop beside us melt away into the wind. As we then got out and immediately onto the floodwaters, and she was constantly documenting the storm and providing any kind of quick social media, adapting to the situation as best we could so we could get messaging out to the people for their safety as best as possible. So I've had the opportunity to work side by side with her as she's adopted to the interesting and unusual situations that seem to pop up when you're in city government. So one thing I think she'll agree with is every day is a new adventure, and I appreciate the opportunity being side by side with her to do that.
There's never, there's never a dull moment, and she's worked for three different managers and five, five mayors now? Mayors come and go, managers, well, she goes for five years. So thank you, how about saying something to the crowd?
Oh, just thank you, I really appreciate and very grateful for the opportunity to serve the city and to serve with the team that we have here. It's really been a blessing, so thank you.
All right. Okay, now we have this consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, any other comments from the council on the consent agenda? Okay, moving along, 10A, we have Chris Corey, Councilman Chris Corey, with cell towers in Benita Springs, please, Chris.
Okay, as Jim Magnus, Ben Hershenson, and Tim Deaton commented during the public comment period, there are problems with respect to coverage of cell phones and subsequently wireless connectivity with the internet because of what we see as problems with the Land Development Code regulations covering cell towers. Now, we're not here to bring forward any motions as to those, what changes are needed, but we do think that the regulations need to be looked at, simplified, and modified such that carriers are incented to build additional cell towers and improve coverage in Benita Springs. We're a rapidly growing community. The census, the last census was around 54,000, but during season, I think that once the pandemic is over, that will grow tremendously. One of the things that happened during the pandemic was the increased utilization of cell phones and tablets, not only for voice communications, but also for wireless internet connectivity. So it's been a problem for some time. The carriers need to be incented to build additional towers in Benita Springs. I know the Technology Committee has looked at what the regulations are like in other cities along the west coast of Florida, east coast of Florida. They would be happy to share that, as well as to help gain an understanding of the FCC overriding regulations. So all the ask is, is this morning, is that council provide support for community development, and John Delmar and his staff to take a look at our present regulations and see if they can be improved such that we can incent the carriers to improve cellphone coverage, wireless connectivity in Benita Springs.
Thank you, Chris. Have any public comment on this? I'm gonna open this up for public comment on this.
How about council comment?
Yeah, 'cause I have a couple.
Hey, council comments?
All right, I think the goals that have been expressed here are certainly laudatory, but I have a lot of questions from the Technology Board, because I think there's more to this story than just the regulations, and I think that's what needs to be explored. I'd be interested to know where the heat maps are for the various carriers, so we know where the holes are. I wanna have an update on the cellphone tower that I believe we approved, that was somewhere at some church off of Benita Beach Road that was supposed to address some of it, I don't know if that's ever put in. I wanna know why the 125-foot tower that was scheduled by Estero at the corner of Coconut Road and 41 has not been put up since it's been authorized for over a year. So I think there are a lot of things, I suspect there are a lot of things that are going on here. And also, I'm all for simplifying and clarifying any kind of regulations, because land development code can be complicated, and the average person should be able to read it and understand what it says, so that, everyone is in favor of that. But also, I want you to recognize that one of the reasons why we have things like a 75-foot limit is because we have also a comprehensive plan that says we want a small-town charm, big, bright future, and some of these height distinguishes, regulations that we have in all kinds of areas is because we're trying to provide that. So there is a balance to what we're doing here, and it's not just NIMBY, it's a whole concept of what we would wanna see in our community 10, 15 years from now. So I think the statement that we're not having a cellphone towers because they wanna get ahead of their competitors, I think that's a clue here. Why aren't they co-locating on these towers that we have? So there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. This is, so you, the people in the Technology Committee have a big job to do, and I'm supportive of that, and until we get something specific, you know, I'm not gonna support anything higher heights or any of this stuff until I see what you're talking about, but I think there's a lot more work that has to be done on this.
Laura?
Thank you. I was, actually, years, three or four years ago, brought up putting up a 125-foot tower way out, way, way, way out, because you have to have certain degrees, it has to fall clear 125 feet, and so where do we have that much land? So there's a safety issue, but less regulation would be best, and I don't know if there's a way to increase making sure no one would get hurt if 125-foot, you know, blew out of the ground and went somewhere in a hurricane, that somebody gets hurt. So those are the concerns I have, finding the proper size, proper size of property. But, you know, there are, I think, as Amy says, there are other things going on, and, 'cause I was, people fought back when I brought this up, and I didn't even see an issue with it. There was plenty of room, and there was an issue, but, and Amy asked, was it built? I have no idea. I, you know, I don't know. So there is an aesthetics to what we want our community to look like when we get 25 years down the road, and who knows what the technology would be? I mean, when I brought this up, Chris, it was said that everything was going underground. Well, certain things were going underground, not the towers, and you know, and so it becomes a technology battle of, you know, minds, and I think Americans are pretty clever, and we'll figure it out, and I'm glad that the Technology Committee is looking into it, and it sounds like, Tim sort of highlighted the real, you know, four points that we need to look at, and I agree, you know, streamlining the application, simplifying it, being able to read it as if you're not, you know, I don't know, finding a dictionary or being a lawyer, and I agree, just streamline it and simplify it, and let's move forward and get better connections.
Mark?
Yeah, so, you know, we're not voting on what was presented this morning, we're simply voting on letting community development look at this and come back to us. You know, after everything we've been hearing over the years with people trying to put up towers, and that one was built at the church on East Terry. I don't know if it's operational yet, but it is up there. You know, the height is an issue, I'm pretty sure we kinda arbitrarily set it at 75 because we didn't want it higher than, you know, our highest buildings, but, you know, if they can't build them that low, they need the extra height, that's something we should look at to have it built in there, and make it a much more streamlined process for them to get their towers. So I'm supportive of this.
Fred?
Yeah, I'm supportive of it, but I wanna point out two things and a suggestion. One of them is, now I learned this from Jim Kaufman before the meeting started, we've had a rash of different days when your cellphone just drops, soon as somebody calls you, they drop. And he said, and he gets notified because of, I think, not only the IT committee, but also his position with Fire District, and a lot of these drops have not been caused by the towers, it's been caused because somebody in construction cut through underground cable. But I think it's a good idea, I wanna see us pursue it. One idea I'd throw out on the table, that you could possibly, you'd have to check, but if we could get an agreement from South Florida Water Management, and Crew, and people like that, there's big areas of conservation land, and you wouldn't be doing anything, putting a little road into the tower, get you have a lock on it, and that's not gonna put it up right up against homes and all that, so you could keep, keep them far enough off the road that they wouldn't even be that big of an objection. That's just an idea, it needs to be investigated by staff and the committee. I support doing something, 'cause it's a problem now, and it also brings things that are, we would normally approve, to us to have to approve.
Okay, my comment is, I see these cell tower things on beach and tennis clubs, and those are 110 feet high. Benita Bay has buildings that are 200, 250 feet high. I don't know, are they usable or not? Maybe we can investigate that. Has anybody applied for a tower lately? Couple questions. But staff can look through it and come back with some sort of report, right, John? Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Public comment on this? I thought I'd open it up to the public. Okay.
Mayor, if there would be a motion to direct staff, that would be, that would be...
I'll make a motion that lets, to have staff take a look at our regulations over cell towers and make suggestions as to how we can improve them.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a gentleman here like to make a comment. Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Jim Kaufman, I work for the Fire District, I also chair the Technology Advisory Board. Just one caution, dumping a huge study on top of existing staff and all that they have to do, I would urge council to just evaluate the time it would take for a knowledgeable person, which might be an engineer, to analyze all the requirements of the FCC, see to what extent they are in harmony with our own local ordinances. That type of bringing back the report is, is a good idea, but what are, are we burdening or tasking existing staff with, with a project that they may not have enough time to devote to, and they may not even have some of the skills needed, such as RF engineering, RF propagation studies, to do that? I'm just throwing a caution out, overburdening existing staff with a highly technical set of recommendations for your consideration.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask?
Yes, Amy.
May I ask our manager something?
Typically, when we give direction to the staff, they, don't they kind of, this is a leading question, don't they normally evaluate what has to be done, and if they found that there were certain aspects that needed to be explored in a more technical way, that they would hire a consultant to do that?
Correct, correct, there would be a recommendation if they need a consultant. Typically, we'd be looking at the regulations, we probably looking at our neighboring jurisdictions, their regulations, and...
So they would evaluate what we've just told them to do, and then they would come back and say, in order to do the proper job, if we wanna coordinate the FCC with that?
The procedure that is normally followed by council when there is to be an amendment to Land Development Code or comprehensive plan is usually, there is a general discussion by council with recommendations by staff, and those recommendations can be formulated into an ordinance in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Fred?
Well, I, also, isn't it possible that the company that John and his staff work for, probably in their vast network, have got somebody that could...
So if they need additional assistance, or there's someone within their company that would be a specialized service, they, we can provide, you know, an additional contract to do so.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Okay, Jesse Purdon is not here today, and I'm gonna take the pleasure of introducing Mike Gibson, nominate him for the Harris Drew Achievement Award, if he's eligible, accept the nomination. We need a vote, I think we need a vote.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything to say, Mike?
No, I appreciate the nomination, and we'll see how it goes. Thanks.
Okay, any other comment, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Okay, I just don't think you're done. Lifetime achievement to me says, you're done, and I'm sorry, so actually, I say, I say no, 'cause you're not done, no, you're not. You will be here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Okay, good luck there, Mike.
Still laughing.
Thanks.
Hey, next item is a second reading and public hearing on an ordinance of the city Benita Springs, Florida, amending the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Four, Zoning, Section Four dash one nine four, General Submittal Requirements for Applications Required in Public Hearing, Section Four dash two two nine, Notices, Section Four dash one seven two eight, Dimensional Requirements, Delination of Parking Spaces, and Section Four dash two 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 four, Clearing or Grading or Filling of Land Providing Conflicts of Law, Severability, Codification, Scrivener's Errors, and Modifications That May Arise From Consideration of Public Hearing and an Effective Date.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jacqueline Gadsden. For the record, I do understand that Mr. Delmar went over this at first reading, just the content of the three changes, the three topic areas, but four different sections of code. The only thing that's changed since that meeting is we went back as staff and looked at what would be the cost for applicants to mail the required notices by certified mail versus if we went ahead and did first-class mail, and there are some substantial cost savings, so we do think that's the better mechanism to go ahead and provide that notice. So that's the big change here in the draft for you, is just those, the language relative to certified mail versus first mail. And we think that would be very proper, takes the burden off of existing staff, it's more cost-effective for the applicants, they still have to provide an affidavit stating that they mailed the required notice, so those are just the big changes, and if you have any questions, happy to...
How many mails did generally go out?
It depends on the size of the property and the type of the application that's being requested, so most of our zoning cases require a 375-foot radius of mailing, so it just depends how dense the area is around them. Our alcohol petitions require 500 feet, so again, it's contingent on the number of surrounding property owners within that radius.
Maybe 50 or...
We've had some where they've been very small, you know, to 50, we have some that have been thousands, so if it's in like a DRI, such as Benita Bay or Puck and Landing, you're gonna grab a greater distance.
In the past, they've gone certified mail?
In the past, staff has done the mailings, and it has gone regular mail. So there really is no difference in terms of the way, the method of the notice being provided, you know, first-class mail versus certified, so that's why we had no objection to going the route that we've presented you today.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, public hearing?
Any public comment on this? Public comment on this? Roll call, please, just, yeah.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Question, uh, can we get a notification to each city councilman that there's going to be one of these in their district, then they can individually reach out to people they know would want to come to it anyway?
Uh, that's up to council's pleasure, so what we do right now is even on our website, there's a public portal where anyone, any member of the public can search by district, um, any type of public hearing application that's been filed with our office.
It can, I don't...
We can, we can do that. We can do that, yes. So, so the direction would be is if it's going to happen in whoever's district it is, would be to notify them.
And that would be just before the, the zoning board and city council meetings, when there's a schedule.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And for neighborhood meetings, so...
I think we just, I think we just...
Did we vote?
Maybe just, yeah, you voted, I was just saying, maybe just notice them when the applications are filed.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's done, okay.
Okay, uh, next item is, is mine, um, and I apologize, I have not brought you an item in some time, so the first time I do in quite some time, I put a, a typo in there. Uh, the, this is a two-part item, the first time is just noticing, uh, acknowledgement, notice from BSU that they have elected to, which is within their, their agreement, to increase rates based on, uh, general indexing, um, that went into effect June first, twenty twenty-two, not twenty twenty-one. Um, and that is an increase of three point five percent, um, but is essentially, um, an increase to address inflation and additional cost of living increases. The second, uh, item is a request from BSU to, uh, have an, a rate adjustment with respect to miscellaneous fees, this would be meter charges, items such as that, it's all included in the packet, as well as their anticipation in new construction, which is effectively an impact fee, to pay for the costs of providing new services as those costs have risen. Uh, if the council is in support of that, I would bring first reading at the next meeting. Uh, the only, the other alternative is for the council to direct its own rate study, which, again, this is not a, a rate increase, this is a essentially cost of doing business increase, so I'm, I'm not sure how exactly the city would conduct that. Uh, if you have any questions, John Jenkins and Don Thompson are here, uh, to answer those.
Uh, yes, Don? So you're going to start collecting this on the first of June and today's the, what, the fifteenth?
Correct, that would be the indexing. And, and for the record, my name's Don Thompson with the, uh, Benita Springs Office of Henderson, Franklin, Starnes and Holt, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here today. We're counsel for Benita Springs Utilities, and as Derek mentioned, with me here today is also John Jenkins, our executive director. Um, with respect to today, we're, we're requesting two things. The first is with respect to the indexing, the franchise agreement allows BSU to annually increase, uh, rates by the percentage equivalent to the CPI increase for this region. Um, they haven't done it in over ten years. Um, with inflation and the like, um, unfortunately, they're having to do it, although they, as the city looks at these things carefully, the, the BSU board is also, but they do need an increase this year. Uh, they could go as high as nine point one percent because that's what the CPI was during the subject period this year. Uh, it's only three five, three point five percent is with respect to the indexing. Again, that is really just a notice here, uh, the, the, um, Benita Springs Utilities Board can do that under the agreement, and we're letting you all know, and we're just asking that you acknowledge receipt of the notice. The second issue is the petition, uh, to amend the tariff, and that relates to ANC fees, which is the same as city impact fees, growth paying for growth instead of, uh, growth being spread among all the current rate payers, and then also, uh, increases in the, uh, in some of the miscellaneous charges like connection charges, review fees, that type of thing, so that the, uh, person or developer that a charge is attributable to is paying for it instead of it being spread out among all of the rate payers. That, we're not asking for any decision today other than for the city to, uh, put that into the ordinance process. Uh, as Derek mentioned, we'd request that, uh, the first reading be sometime in July and the second reading be in August, and then we can, uh, present further, uh, information with respect to it. We do have the Raftellus, uh, report attached. Raftellus is one of the, um, well-known, um, rate analysts and consultants locally. I think, uh, they handle, uh, a, a number of governmental, uh, entities in the area and also nonprofits, uh, so we do have that attached, but our request is that we put it into the ordinance process and, um, be able to present it to the city as a first hearing and a second, um, uh, reading. Uh, we, we suggest July and August. Thank you.
So the three and a half percent is, the meter's running already?
Correct, as of Ju- June first, and that was done, um, I think we sent the notice out maybe in early May or, or something, it just took that long to get it here before the council.
So the people understand that their water and sewer bill are going up?
Correct, and, and I think that comes to about for the average, uh, rate payer, about two dollars and fifty cents a month.
Okay, thank you, Don, any other questions, Amy?
Uh, I just want to, I, I think I know the answer to this question, but, um, the fee you, you call ANC, right? Is that what?
Yes.
That's, if it's comparable to impact fees, then you have to show that the infrastructure that you're putting in costs a certain amount and that your, your impact fee has to be based on that. And I assume that there's a report you, I didn't look for all of it, but that's what that's doing, it's, it's showing how whatever you're proposing on your ANC is reflected on, uh, anticipated costs that have been identified by this, uh, company.
That is correct, Councilman Corumba, yes.
We have the information because we're required to be certain that what you're charging does reflect the cost, just as we have to. If we put a road impact fee, we can't just say, do whatever we want, we have to say, this is what it's costing us to put in a road, and that's how it's related.
You're, you're exactly correct, and I, I agree completely.
Very good, do we need a vote on this? I guess we do.
Uh, if, if there's sufficient direction, I'll bring the, the first reading of the ordinance at the next meeting.
Very good, thanks, Don.
Just to, to clarify, the notice in May was forwarded to council, that is the requirement, but in, in, in process of all transparency, it was best thought to include it with this so that the public is fully aware as, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, and...
Motion to acknowledge receipt and authorize the proceeding of the ordinance, uh, adoption.
Second.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, Laura Carr, I mean, uh, Laura, yeah, Lisa Gibbons, Robertson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Lisa, Lisa's going to come forward and, and provide us with our financial report.
Good morning, for the record, Lisa Robertson, uh, Director of Financial and Administrative Services. We're going to be extremely brief today because as we go through our budget process in the next few months, you all will see quite a bit of, of me and staff presenting our, our budget and outlining what we're headed into in our next fiscal year. We do try to give you all, um, and everyone, the same, um, financial reports and data so you can see benchmarks and trends and clearly identify, um, when something needs attention or when something's positive, um, more importantly. Um, what we have here is our general fund, which is our regular operating revenue, this is the percentage of different types of significant types of revenues that come into the general fund that are available for our operating purposes. Um, as we've discussed before, our real estate taxes are collected at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is, is fantastic because then they're available to fund operations throughout the remainder of the year, and that's why they're such a concentrated percentage, higher percentage of the total pie here. Um, that is consistent each fiscal year and it will equal out as we head throughout the fiscal year, um, again, because the real estate taxes have been collected in the first few months. This is a comparative, two fiscal year comparative, year-to-date, um, general fund revenue by type, again, by significant type of revenue, um, all of our trends that we have been experiencing , um, for the last fiscal year are, are holding steady, um, so that is, that is a good thing. The general fund expenditures, again, these are fiscal year-to-date expenditures as compared to the prior fiscal year. Um, these are our regular operating expenditures, um, so we're thus far not seeing a lot of inflationary spikes. Um, we do, we purchased pumps, um, stormwater pumps in one fiscal year as opposed to another, that's one of the, uh, significant variances, um, and this is compared to, some of these operations haven't gone out for bid yet, uh, when you, when we come to you for, um, construction projects and things of that nature, um, we're seeing more of, of an impact on those with respect to, um, cost increasing. Um, as these services do come up for bid next fiscal year, we do anticipate there will be some inflationary impacts in our regular operating budget, you're just, because of the lag in financial data and the bidding process we have at being in the future, we're not seeing those here, we did want to point those out to you all. Restricted revenue, this gives, um, fiscal year-to-date comparison for our significant, uh, restricted revenues. The top one, as we've talked about, our building permit fees are going down as planned, um, which is, is a good thing, and our road impact fees, um, y'all, you all get a email monthly, um, again, that is, um, outperforming what we had predicted, which is, again, a really good indicator for our, our single-family home market primarily in Benita at this point. Cash balances, these are the last three fiscal years of cash balances. What we attempt to do, um, is accumulate funds for our capital projects so we can pay as we go and not borrow for some of our significant infrastructure that we're putting in, which is a, a great financial strategy, um, to have available to us, so as we see these balances climb, those are just allocated to specific capital projects that are in your capital improvement program, your ten-year plan, within the next few fiscal years. And that is it, and did want to remind you all again, we're going to be, July twentieth will be our first budget workshop, um, which is a Wednesday at five thirty. Um, our millage rate vote, our first vote of our budget will be the following Wednesday, uh, the following meeting on a Wednesday, August third, and then we'll have, um, several meetings as we head towards September thirtieth, will be our last meeting in September, will be when we finally adopt our budget for next fiscal year, as outlined by Florida law.
Have we paid off any of our debt yet?
We did make our final payment on our original debt that we did, um, we did that this fiscal year, so, um, what to, the thing to remember about that as we had, as we look forward in our financial funding, as we look, as our funds come in for next fiscal year, that was funded eighty-five percent by road impact fees. So what that's going to do is the road impact fees that come in next fiscal year will have more available for our road infrastructure projects. It was funded fifteen percent by general fund. Now to remember, we have a, a new debt that we did, um, two thousand twenty, and what's going to happen, that fifteen percent that's funded by the general fund from the original debt, it's actually going to be replaced with the, um, the debt for the five million dollars that we borrowed. Again, that was just five million dollars, not a lot for an entity of our size, but we will be paying that off. So the general fund won't have a positive influx of cash because of that, but the road impact fees will, so that's a, that's a good thing.
That's good. So this year I figured we spent over three million, six hundred thousand dollars paying off money that we already spent. Uh, that's, that's, we don't need it at all, we don't need everything today, we can, I think we cut, let's get caught up with what we have on the ground and, and see if we can avoid borrowing any money.
That initial debt service that we did, that was when we were just starting out as a city, and it, it did some good things, I know we...
Imperial Parkway.
Yes, it did, yes, Imperial Three Oaks, Old, Old Forty-One, it helped, um, do some widening there, um, it really did some great infrastructure work, but it does, it is better as we've shown, if you can pay as you go for your capital projects, and that's what we're, we're really hoping to do, have been planning to do, so...
Do we have a reserve fund?
Yes, we do.
So Mayor, Council, you have a million for hurricane reserve fund, and then you are required under the charter for, uh, three months of operating expenses, or four months of operating expenses, so...
We, uh, increase our reserves if we could.
You know, that is a great point, and the manager, it's been, we've been talking about that at the staff level. Um, one thing when we talk about the budget, we, again, we look, you hear me each month talk about how we look to the state, the state's economist, um, to give us some, some guidelines on where they see things happening, and that the budget that was just adopted, one of the primary, um, points that they made was their reserves are now at a halt, all-time high. Now, what that tells you is, you know, um, they see a need to have money set aside for hurricanes, for whatever, I mean, I'm not going to speak to the state's budget, all the needs that they have, they operate much more widely than we do, but we have similar needs, so, um, I really think that's a good, a point we can take, and we have been talking about that, and I think the manager...
During, during the budget process, we're going to ask council some direction on that as well as we, we, we have an idea of what Hurricane Irma cost us, of course, and then what we would have in the unassigned fund balance, but also, um, if there's any consideration of moving some additional reserve for hurricane.
Or, or general...
Or did, general, for a general, any general use of reserves, so, natural disaster.
Yes.
Okay, anything else we don't need to vote, you know? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you so much.
And, uh, Mayor and Council, another item, I just want to remind everyone, Lisa did touch that the July twentieth meeting is at five thirty, I just want to, uh, make everyone aware, um, primarily that will be a budget workshop unless we have any item that, zoning issue or any item that's, um, generally a consent agenda item that has to be addressed because of timing, uh, we'll try to devote that whole meeting to budget.
I'll be on the phone for that one, you know, I'll be driving, so...
Okay, Mayor and Council, reports, Amy, you like to start us off?
First of all, I want to, uh, I did watch on, video on YouTube, Addison set it up for me, and I want to thank him for doing that, the year public hearing workshop, I wasn't able to go to it, but it was, it's on video on YouTube, so if anybody wants to watch it, and I just want to thank everyone who participated in that, and this is the first step in what we're using to review our comprehensive plan and some of the things that came out of it, I think we're really interested in, and we all be part of the record, but thank you for all our residents who participate, there was quite a few num- people there, and, uh, so I, I, I appreciate that. Um, I also attended, as many of you did, uh, an NPL public hearing that presented the results of a feasibility study for the use of the potential, uh, railroad that, that's going through our town, and they come up with three alternatives, um, just as a presentation kind of thing, and I know that the same presentation is going to be, uh, come before the NPO, which I think is on Thursday, I think it's Friday, right, Friday or something. So, um, I don't know how we're, we, we paid twenty-five thousand dollars, Adistero paid twenty-five thousand dollars for this feasibility study, so I'm not quite sure where we're going to go from here, uh, or, you know, we, we're not even close to making any decisions of, and it, we, we require a lot of support from Lee County, so if we, if this community wants to go through with that, uh, we're going to have to get together to advocate for that. Um, I also recently went to a groundbreaking at Salt Leaf, the, the development that's, um, off of Coconut Road by London Bay at their golf course. It was kind of fun for me because I am a golfer, and they presented their plans for the, the golf course up there, and those of you who are golfers, Raymond Floyd was there, that was kind of fun for me of, you know, a really, a very, um, significant, uh, golf professional, and they have some interesting plans there, and it was just fun to, to do some fun things for, uh, for a change and, you know, uh, kick up the sand, but they're going ahead with it, with that project, and it was good for me. Um, and I want to thank Governor DeSas, DeSantis for vetoing SB twenty-five oh eight, I know we had this discussion about, that was an improved, uh, bill when it came through the state legislature, but I had some misgivings about it, and I guess he did too, and so since he agrees with me, I'm thanking him for that. Uh, and finally, I just wanted, um, notice, uh, the council and, and people that, uh, it's my intention for, to meet with any candidate for the council, as I've done every year since I've been on this, um, council, that anyone that comes, except for incumbents, to just talk to them about the, the objectives that we have here on the council and how we, how we operate, and I will get together with, um, Arlene in case she wants me to emphasize certain things, but I basically tell them, go over all the objectives so that if any... but I basically tell them, go over all the objectives so that if anybody gets elected here, they don't have to be so green. That was sort of my intent. So when I was sitting on the council, I did it, and now I'm going out, off in November, but I just want to tell everybody that's what I'm going to do. And I think this is the last day for qualifying, so I'm, I know who I have to talk to. So I'll check the, the website when I get home, and anybody on that list, I'm going to offer to sit with them, which is what I've done every single year.
Hey, Fred, you got anything you done?
No, I, I share Amy's comments on Senate Bill 2508 being vetoed. That was.
What was that about? I'm sorry.
Well, it was taking a lot of work that our congressmen and others had been doing with the Corps of Engineers and making it, taking it out of our basket and putting it up more to a state basket. And then, then there were also, there are a lot of things in it that were not good. He covered it in his speech very well.
Taken away our home rule?
Yeah, you could, it's, it's broader than the home rule, but it's, it's a good thing because now what's been done by Byron and others is still intact with the Corps of Engineers, and that, that's a good thing.
Good, thank you.
The, that's, that's fine. I'll wrap it up.
Mike?
I'm good, thanks. Oh, well, and thank you for nominating me.
Okay, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Is it a done deal or a [inaudible]?
Yeah, Laura, about you, you got, you got comments today?
I do, just a couple. St. Mary's Church on Mondays gives out food for a week for folks, and they didn't have any plastic bags. The delivery didn't come, so they weren't going to be able to give out protein, you know, like chicken with lettuce. So I went over to Ace Hardware, and I said, could you guys spare some bags? They gave 100 bags. So I want to thank Ace for helping to make the food line move along. I also want to, well, I love our governor, but really, that baseball park vetoed. But that's okay. He's done some really wonderful things, you know, helping out, you know, encouraging fatherhood, encouraging, well, you know, when even police dogs retire, that they get a little help. And I also appreciate his emphasis on keeping the Everglades in our minds, and that is our number one kind of water flow. And so, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Corey?
Oh, and Salt Leaf was really great.
No, I attended the rail to trail meeting with Amy, and Mike was there, I know, and so forth. I think in order for the project to move forward, there's going to have to be a tremendous amount of community support, which means that that's what's going to generate the pressure to get this thing built. We had at the meeting the, one of the commissioners of the Sarasota County, whatever the name of that county is, but he was there talking about how Sarasota got their rails-to-trails project done. And he emphasized that the more community support you have and the more that people push to get this thing done, the quicker the project can be realized. I mean, this is a long-term project. We haven't even got a price on the railroad property yet. You know, this thing could stretch out 10, 15, 20 years. But if the community of Benita Springs and if people in Estero really get behind it, it's possible to move this project such that it could get done in, say, seven or eight years. So for those people in town that, that want to see this, and I'm, I'm among them, those people, that, it would be good if, if we can get a community effort organized. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I, I've already had my say. How about public comment here? Come on for it, Charlie.
Oh, no, before 10, we would have had a record.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you. I'm Charlie Strater, 43-year resident of Benita Springs. I'm speaking today regarding two related downtown issues. That of tearing down a public-owned historic building at the Wonder Gardens, and second, of transforming public-owned land into private space at Bamboo Village, five acres parcel. I'm not speaking on behalf of any organizations, although there are concerned citizens, obviously. A quote to my point, and I've heard some of it mentioned here today somewhat, that I hope you'll consider is, "This is not about what you can get today. This is about what you're going to give to tomorrow." Repeat. This is not about what you can get today. This is about what you're going to give to tomorrow. I ask that you don't give up on the future of Benita Springs. Tearing down a landmark structure for a few parking spaces and converting five acres of precious public space into private space is not progressive or imaginative and robs the future. The city's Historic Preservation Board voted unanimously for preservation of the restaurant, and there's potential benefit for the future by strategically tying together four corners of a major road and river. I can't help recalling the demolition of our community hall for questionable reasons and with no plan to replace. After leaving the gardens out of the rest, the restaurant, out from the city's planned facilities assessment, to then use demolition by neglect issues is unbecoming and hypocritical. Assuming your plan of apartment buildings is successful in spurring more similar downtown development, which is likely to happen anyway based on the zoning and that we are one of the fastest-growing cities, areas in the nation, the question becomes, what then? Once your vision of a more dense urban downtown comes to fruition, five acres for public use will be even more valuable. You may believe that you know what your constituents want, but without legitimate polling of your residents, how can you really know? Hearing from the same small group of vested or passionate people is not the same as true public surveys. And you are at odds with several of your comprehensive plan goals regarding these two locations, and I think risking bad economic and social decisions. As consultant Robert Gibbs analyzed, there's already the population down to support retail growth downtown. He suggested marketing our small-town charm and that of having a historic area. Will a few more places to park cars on the gardens property or massive apartment complexes along the river fit your branding or make downtown more appealing or livable? In summation, the taxpayers deserve better with their assets. Please do not deny future council's opportunities for something grand, especially in the dead of summer, right before elections, and with no real public input. Other cities use public spaces for redevelopment. We can too. I hope you will respect our few remaining historic resources and try to discover and respect the will of your residents. Thank you for your time and your service.
Any more public comment, please? There we go. Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, City Council. My name is Kyle Moran. I first moved to Benita Springs 30 years ago, and for the vast majority of the time that I've been here, since this city was incorporated at the dawn of the new millennium, we've been very focused on recapturing our downtown as a great destination. Unfortunately, when 41 was relocated to its present location to the west, that old 41 downtown district, once the true heart of our downtown, was effectively left for dead. It became crime-ridden and downtrodden. The businesses there were low-quality and industrial. And this city, and under your continued leadership and the leadership of this staff, has carried a torch for 20 years to try to rebuild something better there. The city has made incredible investment, has worked with its citizens, has embarked on a journey involving really truly world-class consultants to the city who are specialized in revitalizing downtowns and have done so across this nation, nation, and in places nearby, like in downtown Fort Myers, which went from crime-ridden and downtrodden to vibrant again. We've been on this path for a very long time, and unfortunately now, just as any time, there are distractions from the political process, and there is misinformation in the community. And right now, there's really harmful misinformation that is swirling around about density and about environmental impact and about environmental threats and about traffic congestion and about public park access and things. And the reality is, as you know well, because you're focused on the facts and you're focused on the long term, this is misinformation, and we need to get past it to continue to build. We cannot drop the torch. As a quick reminder, when the city embarked on this plan 20 years ago, they actually put, they actually put investment in place immediately. They bought some of the biggest eyesores in the downtown with an idea of actually turning them around. The idea was that we would take a step back so that we could take two steps forward in the future. That is what happened at Bamboo Village, but we got stalled out. We got stalled out for, for reasons beyond our control, economic reasons, macroeconomic reasons, and what happened to the general economy 13 or 14 or 15 years ago. But we have a window now, and we have a partner, and we have a way to go forward. And let me also point out that when the city makes a big, a grand gesture like that, private enterprise is waiting behind, and the, the private enterprise tips in the balance. So what happened 20 years ago is a private enterprise followed, and they took no fewer than nine parcels downtown that previously had buildings and businesses, maybe not the type of buildings and businesses that we wanted, but they had buildings and businesses, and they took them down to invest something better behind the city. And those nine dirt lots still wait for the city to do something great. So it is really key to get past this misinformation. It is really key to take a positive step forward. The public government can do a lot, but it can't and it shouldn't do it all. It needs private enterprise to come from behind. And if, if Baron Collier, in partnership with this city, given their experience and their 100-year history in the city, if they fail, it will send a chill across the city that will knock us back 20 years. There is nothing inevitable. It felt inevitable 20 years ago, and we've been looking at dirt lots ever since. So thank you again for your level-headed leadership, for seeing through this, thanks to staff, and let's build a better future for Benita and make it a true destination. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comment? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned. Thank you, folks.